Dear wise and loving father, we're grateful for your presence in this public meeting. Thank you for this day and the many blessings you provide each of us. This evening, we ask for your guidance during this meeting and the decisions that will be made here tonight. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in Uba City and the surrounding communities. In your most blessed name that I pray, amen.
Amen. I'm gonna have one of the students from River Valley School lead us into Pledge Allegiance. Coach Marie. Would you like to designate one of your students if they're here? Okay, Ashley. Lead us into Pledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Hollywood. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy birthday to you.
Now, that wasn't so hard, was it? First of all, I want to welcome the students that are here from River Valley. I believe they're from the government class, is that correct? Perfect, and then in addition to that, we've got a couple of proclamations. We've got the River Valley High School Athletic Team, Track and Field that are here today to receive proclamations as well. I was asked by many of the members to move all the proclamations all the way to the end. If that's okay with you kids? No?
That's fine.
Yeah, I think our city manager asked if that was okay to do, but I figured most of you had to leave and many of you are here to receive some extra credit and take notes. But we'll try to make this as painless as possible. So first up is proclamations that we have. I've got item number one is a proclamation and item number two, we have a presentation. Item number three is a proclamation. So what I'm gonna do is, instead of having the presentation in the middle, I'm gonna go ahead and have proclamation number one, proclamation number two. First, I would ask the proclamation, I'm gonna present it to Brian Berg for the ICANN Bike Program. Is Brian here or come up to the front? Not here. Okay. Okay. Do you want to accept it on his behalf and give it to them or do you want to reschedule that for a different time? Let's reschedule it. Okay, Marie, you're up. You want to, if your members are here, you want to bring them out to the front?
This is football team or volleyball team? Track. Track. Thank you.
Let me get right here in the middle here, if you guys don't mind here. First and foremost, I'm gonna give you guys a mic so you can introduce all yourselves. Your names are all here on the proclamations, but I want to make sure the audience, not only here, but the audience at home. We've got cameras here that recorded, so all of the 60,000 residents in the city of Uba City are able to see this meeting. So if you could please state your name and what your position is.
Rob Cates, I'm the vertical jump coach.
Adam Bogan, I coach heavy athletics.
Marie Crager, I'm the head track and field coach.
Mackenzie Arnold.
Sidney Bailey.
Alan Bills.
Alyssa Emerson.
Miranda Tujin.
Penelia Richardson.
Wentz Pedraza.
Shagoon Bali.
Shader Rasul.
Lauren Crager.
Ashley Sidhu.
Inez Titus.
Perfect, just in time. I've got one more. We're just going around and having you introduce yourself.
I'm Coach Fulmer, Peggy Fulmer.
Perfect, first and foremost, congratulations to each and every one of you for winning this beautiful title. And Coach Crager, I thank you and to all the coaches, I know you give up a lot of your time, countless hours to coach and train these students to become the best that they are in everything that you guys do. I know the coaches push you and the coaches pull you to achieve where you need to go. So all of that cannot be achieved without an education, right? You've got to have good grades to do that as well. So please welcome River Valley High School Track, Coach Marie Crager and the River Valley Girl Track and Field Team. Congratulations on winning the San Joaquin Track and Field Section Champions. On May 23, 2014, the River Valley High School Girls Track and Field Team entered the San Joaquin Section Track and Field Championships as a tri-county conference champions. The team won the tri-county conference with a record of 10 wins and zero losses. The team won scoring 48.5 points, beating 31 other teams to win the championship. The team was led to victory by head coach Marie Crager and assistant coaches Adam Bogan, Rob Cates and Peggy Fulmer. Leanne Jarvis was named MVP Track and Mackenzie Arnold was named MVP Field. Amani Burley, Alyssa Emerson, Lauren Crager, Courtney Messingale, Ashley Sidhu were all named All League. This is a first section title for River Valley High School Girls Track and Field and the first time in the school's history where a girls' team has won a section championship in San Joaquin Section. The City Council of Uba City believes it is important to acknowledge and appall the accomplishments of the youth of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that ICANN Skill, Mayor of City of Uba City and on behalf of the entire City Council, to hereby congratulate the River Valley Field High School Girls Track and Field Team on winning the San Joaquin Section Track and Field Championship. I hereby urge all residents of Uba City to join me in recognizing Coach Crager and the Falcons Track and Field Team for this outstanding athletic achievement. Congratulations.
Well, this is kind of fun having RV students here as well. Mr. Mayor and the council members, I want to thank you very much for honoring these young ladies. They're outstanding young ladies, not just on the track, but as human beings. So it's our pleasure to coach them. I have outstanding assistant coaches. So I just want to thank the city of Uba City again for honoring these outstanding youth of Uba City and River Valley High School.
Thank you guys very, very much. Not only as council members, but as community members, we watch you guys through the newspaper, we watch you on sports and you guys all make us proud. So the only thing that we can say is keep doing what you do and keep winning division sectional championships. It is my honor also to present you with this beautiful pen of City of Uba City. It does got a green and gold. The green is for River Valley and the gold is for Uba City High School. So we do, we do have, I know, hey, as a council, we do have both schools that, you know, are near and dear to our hearts. So let me give you guys these pens and thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's try to get a little bit closer so Darren Gill can take a picture of everybody here. Where's Darren at? There he is. Yeah, let's, if you guys want to come out to the middle a little bit. Try to. Guys gotta come a little bit closer, come on. Darren, are you able to get everybody? Thank you guys. Congratulations.
Yeah. We're already hiring campus. Congratulations.
Go RV.
Oh, yes. Extra points if you stay.
Okay. Perfect, now next thing up is, Mr. Gill, are you presenting the Walk Your Wheels presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Gill and council members. Tonight I have the privilege of presenting a little information on our Walk Our Wheels campaign. As you might remember, beginning of the year, we began a clean and safe program, which really encompasses a variety of things, but it's making ourselves cleaner and safer and an enjoyable place to live, work and play. And so we've had a variety of different programs. One that dealt with vagrants. We had the citywide shopping cart program and then we had a focused effort in our downtown core. And one of the issues that was brought up by the businesses were the bicycles and skateboards that are constantly going up and down the street. And as you're trying to open up a door onto Pluma, you might, you could get ran over. And so we put up some temporary signs up here that said, no skateboarding, no bicycling on sidewalk. Didn't really just seem to match Pluma Street. And through an effort really led by Sierra Wakefield, where's Sierra? Sierra's in our Public Works Department. She led an effort to design some signs that are, you know, more friendly in tone with the statement and they also blend with the style and the design of Pluma Street. And so these are the new signs. There's actually 24 of them. They'll be going up tomorrow morning and they're, you know, be sidewalk friendly and walk your wheels. There's actually two of them, one has a bicycle, as you can see, the other one has a skateboard. So these will be going up onto Pluma Street. I believe tomorrow morning they're being installed. There's 24 of them and we'll still maintain a couple of the no bicycling and no riding skateboards for police purposes. But all these have the Uba City Municipal Code on them. And this is really the first step and hopefully some signs that'll be throughout the city that, you know, match our brand, that have our city logo, that have a color that's, that's matches design of our community, especially on Pluma Street. And hopefully maybe as we have directional signs throughout the community directing people down to Pluma Street or down to the new park in the river bottoms. But these signs are great. Like I said, Sarah did an amazing job putting together the language. It's not a negative tone, it's a positive. It's be sidewalk friendly and walk your wheels. And hopefully we'll see how it goes. I know as we talk with the businesses down there, it's a key issue for them. And they really have asked, you know, what is the city gonna do? And what we told them is we'll post these signs, but really it's a good opportunity for them to stop people as they're going down the street. They can point to the signs and ask them to walk their wheels in a, hopefully in a friendly manner. And hopefully the next time they come down the street, it's, they'll walk their wheels down the sidewalk. We won't have collisions with pedestrians along the sidewalk. So if you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Any questions from council members from Mr. Gill?
Just to comment, just like to thank staff for being proactive and coming up with this creative approach to this issue.
Great, thank you Darren, great job.
Thanks.
Okay, next thing up is item number four, ordinances. And this is the second reading for adopt an ordinance prohibiting aggressive and unsafe panhandling within the corporate city limits of Uba City, Chief Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Today it is the second reading of this. I'm gonna go into a little bit of it just because all the students are here today and they may not be aware of it. So just to touch on it briefly, I apologize for those that have listened to it a couple of times already. We've had a number of complaints from the citizens and businesses of unsafe and aggressive panhandling, creating public safety hazards, it's intersections near businesses, medians, locations with automated teller machines. So the staff got together with the city attorneys and we looked at a bunch of different alternatives, what other cities are doing throughout California, United States, to see what we could come up with that balances people's right to the First Amendment while taking care of the problem we're having with unsafe panhandling situations and aggressive panhandlers, which both detract from the, from the city and what we're trying to put out there for everybody. So we came up with various different ordinances and what we went with is a one, kind of a hybrid form of Sacramento counties, some of Santa Cruz, some of the different areas around Sacramento that have all done the same type of ordinances. We wanted to address two specific things. Number one, unsafe panhandling and number two, aggressive panhandling. And again, we are trying to bear in mind that everybody does have a First Amendment right. So with that in mind, we came up with the following items that are gonna be covered under this ordinance. Number one, no person shall panhandle in an aggressive and intrusive manner in any public place. So that touches on the aggressive panhandling. We have a bunch of different definitions that handle that under this ordinance. And all panhandling is prohibited at the following specified locations. Financial institutions and automated teller machines. Motor vehicles, no person shall panhandle from an operator or occupant traveling in a motor vehicle while such vehicle is located within 100 feet of any intersection in which at least one corner is controlled by an official traffic signal, which basically is a stoplight. Number two is median strips. No person shall panhandle on a median strip or in any manner or location that is inconsistent with provisions of this California Vehicle Code. No person shall panhandle in driveways accessing shopping centers, retail and business establishments. So no person shall panhandle from an operator or no person shall panhandle from an operator or occupant traveling in a motor vehicle while such vehicle is located within 35 feet of a driveway providing vehicular access to a shopping center, retail or business establishment. That covers the areas like the Walmarts when people are trying to come and go and their vision is obstructed, their number one primary job when you're driving a vehicle, very important for students when you're young and also for people throughout their life is to make sure that you're paying attention to what you're doing. Texting detracts from that, but so does this when people are waving signs in front of you coming in and out of traffic. So we want to address that and make sure nobody is doing that. Public transportation vehicle and stops. Again, a person that's coming on a public transportation in a bus or at a stop is there for one reason. They're trying to get to their next destination. It's not like they can walk away from somebody else, they'll miss the bus. It's kind of like you're a captured audience and they shouldn't have to be imposed on by aggressive or imposing panhandlers. Gasoline stations and fuel pumps, the same type of thing. You're there for a specific reason. You're bringing your money out, you have cash in your hand, you're there to specifically do an item and it's not like you can drive away, you may be out of gas. You have to be there for a specific reason. The last thing that we're touching on is no person shall panhandle in any place after dark. So with those as the restrictions, the penalties for that is infraction or any person who violates this section shall be guilty of infraction the first time, which basically means they'll get a citation, possible fine. Second time, if any person who violates the same section of this chapter more than two times within a six-month period is liable for a misdemeanor. So that could be jail time or that could be a fine, combination of the both or community service. And then one thing I did want to really touch upon is the difference between homeless and vagrants. Because homeless are people that are out there as a result of the economic impact or something happened to them and they want to take advantage of all the programs that are available. So we want to make sure that we are not, this is more addressed to vagrants. Vagrants are out there that are always trying to take advantage of the system in the sense that they have the same opportunities, they have the opportunities to get home, they have the opportunities to get something to eat. Those things are provided to them, but they want to use it for other opportunities. So although this doesn't specifically say charities or anything else like that, it doesn't break them apart. This is whether you're doing a car wash or whether you're panhandling, it's still unsafe to be out there in those specific areas. So it does address it in that manner. With that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Questions for Chief.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the enforcement side of this, if someone is a vagrant and they, or homeless and they don't have any place that they call home, other than perhaps the river bottoms or somewhere like that, how are we gonna really be able to enforce this? I mean, it's not like you can send a notice to their home and that they have to appear or whatever. Does it just create a warrant for their arrest in the future or what does that do?
That's possible, it could create a warrant, depends on the situation. We'll hand them the ticket right there when we write the ticket, so it comes to them. If they don't take care of the ticket, yes, it does turn into a warrant.
All right, thank you.
Chief, have you gone out and done any outreach at this present time prior to the ordinance coming in? And if so, what kind of results have you found?
The results are hard to measure, but yes, we have been going out. We've had all the officers, we have a pamphlet that basically says all the different available options from the community. They're provided by the homeless consortium, so we've been working with them. And they basically say, here's a place to get food, here's places to get shelter, here's opportunities to get different jobs, clothing and the different items that are provided by the churches and the different consortium groups. So we hand those out and we've been handing those out prior to the ordinance. So we're trying to touch on everybody, not giving them citations right now because obviously our intent is not to create, you know, more problems, but to fix the problem that we have right now. And that's currently to get them off of their, off this unsafe areas and to get rid of the aggressive panhandling. So we're giving them all the different opportunities. I don't know how to measure that right now, that's more something that'll have to happen later on as we see the decrease in volume of people violating those rules. So maybe count on the ordinance or the citations and stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief?
Chief, are, is there going to be some educational opportunity through like the church? A lot of these community organizations, they try to do good things and hence create a problem because they invite the homeless to that neighborhood, like the one on Pluma Street. Are you planning to go out at feeding times and educate the people there?
I think that's more of a citywide problem than a police department problem. That's everybody getting together and we're kind of working on a safe and clean project right now throughout the different city staff. So it's something that we're addressing. I don't think it's the police department can specifically handle that or do that. We're not kind of cut out for that, we don't have the personnel to do that. But obviously that does create issues. And I think we saw that last council meeting when we had specific business owners talking about the problems that are presented as a result of feeding in a retail area where everybody's congregating hours before and hours afterwards with no place to go.
Go ahead.
Chief, and this kind of pertains to getting the word out. Is there going to be an effort maybe to work through the homeless consortium and the churches that provide resources? There's, I mean, there's 18 different churches that provide resources currently to homeless, to be able to provide information on panhandling, like the pamphlets that you currently have, getting those into the hands of those different groups so they can hand those out also. Those are not typically the problem locations, but there is an association with that also.
Absolutely, Councilman Buckland, that is one of the big issues that you presented, but is getting the word out. But also on the other hand, those were provided to us by those different groups in the consortium. So we're working in partnership with them. We realize it's a community problem, not a police problem, not a individual business problem. It's everybody's issue and we're all trying to get together and work through this as a staff and through the consortium in partnership.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? You have to go up to the podium, state your name for the record so that we get you on.
That's why you'll be on TV.
Panhandling is kind of an old school term.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Allison Robinson. Panhandling is kind of an old school term. I think probably the majority of people know what that means, but we have a very young audience here tonight. And so just for proprietary reasons, could we possibly have a definition of what panhandling is?
Sure, Chief.
Thank you.
So the definition in the ordinance is defined, "Panhandling shall mean to ask, beg, request, using the spoken, written or printed word or bodily gesture, signs or other means with the purpose of obtaining an immediate donation of money or other thing of value or panhandling the direct and immediate sale of goods or services." Thank you, Allison, for asking that.
Thank you. Okay.
No further comment, I'll move to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Mon. No, it's not. Got a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion encouraged, thank you. Item number five is a public hearing and this is Recology's Uba City Rate Adjustment for rate year 2015 and related amendment to 2011. Collection Services Agreement, yes.
Since I regulate solid waste facilities in both Uba and Center County, being a local LA, I'm going to accuse myself.
Perfect, you can go back and play cards for a while. Mr. Crager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item this evening pertains to Recology's Collection Service Agreement with the City of Uba City. For the benefit of the audience, Recology is our service provider, as many of you may know, for refuse, recycling and green waste services. We do have a couple of notable people in the audience this evening representing Recology. We have Terry Bentley and Jackie Silman and then Regional Waste Management Authority Keith Martin. And although the agreement is between the City of Uba City and Recology, Keith and his staff provide a lot of support services that are valued to the city when we go through these processes. So in December 2011, the city entered into an eight-year collection service agreement with Recology. There are annual adjustments as part of that process. So for the first, first, there we go, first three years of the agreement, there is a refuse rate index, which is a composite rate of many of the different factors that go into their services, such as fuel, such as labor and related landfill costs, among others. So that's a rate, that's a composite rate for the first three years. The fourth year, which is the rate which we are in, is a detailed rate application year. So that means that Recology submits all of their financial statements and an independent review is done and compares needed revenues against expenses that they have. The Regional Waste Management Authority retained the firm of Crowe Horwath to do that evaluation and it was determined that there's a revenue surplus of approximately $1 million. So simply stated, the service providers, the services provided cost Recology a certain amount of money and the revenue that's coming in is about $1 million higher. Now, why might that be? You know, the optimist in all of us is that as Recology provides services, there are always opportunities for efficiencies. So as those efficiencies are gained in their operations, it shows within their ability to provide a services at an amount less than the revenue requirement. So based upon this information, your regional administrators got together in both Uba and Center Counties and evaluated what to do with the residual funding. It was determined that the, our commercial rates are between 14 and 54% higher than other commercial rates in surrounding jurisdictions. And based upon this, it's recommended that the commercial rates be reduced by 5.92%. Additionally, that a franchise fee of 1% be set aside, increasing that in order to provide for road repair to our residential roads. Now, this was anticipated in the 2011 Collection Service Agreement. It specifically states that in this year that we're coming into, that the franchise fee would increase in order to provide the funding for road repairs, specifically in residential areas. And this is important because we have three vehicles, Recology vehicles, at our request. That's the way that the, the collection is designed, three different vehicles on our roads that are not designed for heavy truck traffic. And so these funds will be set aside specifically for that use. Additionally, an additional 1% to go into the rate stabilization and capitalization fund to be used for the increase for next year's franchise fee adjustment. So the, with regard, the question's been raised specifically, I know Dr. Larry Ozeran is here this evening and I expect he's going to, would like to discuss some of his perspectives with the council. But a very good question was raised with regard to residential rates. Why would you just take commercial rates and not residential rates? The regional administrators have looked historically at residential rates. Residential rates can be unique because although we have a 32-gallon refuse cart, we also have a 64-gallon recycling cart and a 96-gallon green waste cart. So it's really a package of services. Other jurisdictions might elect to have a larger refuse cart, such as 64. We purposely went to a smaller refuse cart, frankly, so that, to influence people's behavior to recycle more. The cost and Terry Bentley of Recology and I have discussed this in the past, really we could move toward a larger cart for refuse at the cost of just the cart, which actually can be a significant cart when you add up all the carts that we have in the city. And that's what's been held us back from changing services or recommending that. But it's really a package of services. So when you look at the package of services for residential from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, we are very much in that competitive range. And that's why the target has gone to the commercial side of where it's up to 50% higher than other jurisdictions. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Encourage you to hold a public hearing for public comment. And then should there be any additional questions from the council, I'd be happy to return.
Any questions for Mr. Crager at this point in time? Okay. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item can do so by going to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. I do have a speaker's card here for Dr. Larry Ozeran, who wishes to speak on behalf of this item. Dr. Ozeran.
Mayor Gill, members of the council, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Larry Ozeran from Northwest Uba City and I'm here to urge the council to table this item pending a new review by the Regional Waste Management Authority and consideration of additional options. First, I want to thank the authority for finding cause for reduction. I think that that benefits all ratepayers. Unfortunately, I disagree with what was recommended and how the reduction be distributed. The recommendation appears to be prejudicial in favor of one class of ratepayer over another class of ratepayer, but not in a way that fixes a prior prejudice. The data presented certainly supports a commercial reduction, but the data that was presented did not present the residential information. And residential information that I have seen subsequently suggests that residential ratepayers are paying anywhere from 20- That residential ratepayers are paying anywhere from twenty percent to sixty percent more than comparable residential ratepayers in surrounding communities, which is even higher than the fourteen percent. That commercial ratepayers are being, are paying more for. So, in fact, if you look at the data, it can be argued that the residential ratepayers should in fact receive a larger reduction than the commercial ratepayers. Um, so to uphold the council's fiduciary obligation to the ratepayers, um what I'm requesting is the council return this issue to the Regional Waste Management Authority. Um, to consider all of the data together to present a full package which demonstrates both the residential comparisons and the commercial comparisons. And make a rational um opportunity for uh one or more ways in which. Um, the rate reduction could apply appropriately to all ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ozeran. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Before I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council? Okay, seeing that there's no mad rush to the podium, I'll go and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for their comments, their recommendations.
The recommendation was the five point nine two percent for commercial. What, what? Uh, per month charges at approximately on average?
So it um depends upon your service. Um, in uh. So for example, our one yard in Uba Center is a hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, the average rate is about seventy-nine dollars, so that's the one that's fifty-four percent higher. So if you knock uh six percent off that, you knock about, you know, seven, over seven dollars off that. Off that amount, seven fifty. So that would be the reduction for that one. Your two-yard dumpster is about uh one ninety-seven, your three-yard dumpster is two hundred and thirty-eight. So those, that's once a week service for those commercial rate sizes.
And through the mayor. Our contract has a number of concessions that relate to service to the residential uh properties within Uba City. Being, meaning that there's a bulky item pickup that, that occurs. What are some of the other?
So in, in looking at other jurisdictions, one is of course the bulky item pickup. We also have compost. Uh, twice a year compost, the ability to get um a significant amount of compost. Other jurisdictions don't have a weekly recycling or uh green waste. Um, for example. There's some, uh, once every two weeks they pick up those. So uh Rockland is another example where they don't have, see, this is uh, this is where it becomes difficult to look at. Because we may have a thirty-two gallon uh cart, but guess what? Rockland has a ninety gallon. You know why they have a ninety gallon? Cause they've got a, what we call a dirty Murph. They're mixing all of their garbage together with their recyclables. Then it goes to the material recovery facility and they have to sort it out. So they have a larger container than us, but it's because they're actually blending the two together. Yeah, so it's, it's a variation of not necessarily weekly pickup and then the, the dirty, what we call dirty. Dirty recycling, but rather than se- separated recycling like we have. So, you know, it's, there, there are variations on this.
And uh, the one percent to be set aside for residential street uh repair for future repair, what kind of money? Is that that we're, that we're talking about in, in real dollar figures?
One hundred thousand dollars a year.
And, and that, I mean, to me, that's a substantial investment that we're making back into our communities for. For back into the community uh for our residential streets to keep them up and, and uh properly repaired and safe.
It is, uh, Councilman, especially in, in the consideration that there, as we know. Roads can degrade to a certain point where then they become lost. You have to totally reconstruct them at a much higher expense. So our ability to use these funds as a city to do uh, to seal them so that there's not water. Uh permeating into them and ruining roads, uh, there's, there's a big return on investment for money like this.
Well, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work you and your, your fellow people from the different uh communities have done. I want to thank the Regional Waste Management Authority for doing such a diligent effort and their board of directors are outstanding. I want to uh move the recommendation. Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Stricki.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you. Next up is public communication. You're welcome, encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Yes, I guess we better get to each. There he comes. Comments on controversial items may be limited. In large groups, we're encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Item number six is written requests. Members of the public submitting written requests at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting will normally be allotted. Five minutes to speak. Turtle, do we have any written requests?
We did not receive any written requests.
Perfect. You know, for everybody standing outside, we do got a couple of seats up here in the front if you guys want to come and sit inside. We've got three seats up here, one there, one here, one back here, so got three up here in the front.
And if anybody wants mine, they can have mine.
Yeah, so. Item number seven is uh parents of interested citizens. Member of the public may address the city council items of interests that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anyone from the public or here in the audience that wishes to address the city council items that are not on the agenda. Can do so at this point in time. Okay, wow, everything must be running pretty smooth. Uh, next up is consent calendar. All matters of the, all matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be retained can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of the city council. Staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Anyone from the council wish to have anything pulled from the consent calendar to be discussed separately? Anyone from the public? Okay.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Move the consent calendar.
Okay, got a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Wonderful. Motion carries, item number eleven. Sale of city-owned properties between Live Oak Boulevard and Clark Avenue presented by Brad McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening uh requesting council to consider selling ten acres of city-owned property. Between Live Oak and Clark Avenue, the map attached, uh, the ten acres there to the east. That area right there, Live Oak Boulevard, Clark Avenue, Water Treatment Plant, and North Ridge Park. We're requesting as well for the authorized city manager to enter to a purchase sale agreement with Eric Carlshoi Education Foundation. For the sale price of six hundred thousand dollars with the updated legal description uh that was presented to you earlier this evening. The fiscal impact to this request is six hundred thousand dollars into the revenue. That would, of revenue, that would be allocated back into the general fund and the development impact fee for parks. In addition, staff is requesting council to designate the proceeds from the sale. To the future development of a park. As council is aware of, in nineteen ninety-four, just to give a little history, I know council apologized to you for this a few times. In nineteen ninety-four, uh, the city purchased approximately fourteen acres. At the time of the acquisition, uh, it was in the city's intention to utilize the property as a public facility, uh, such as a uh community park. In two thousand five, approximately five acres, five point three six acres, as you can see on that map, was uh. Uh, developed as a detention pond by the city. In two thousand four, when the general plan was done, the last time the general plan was done, was designated, it designated the property as low density residential. In pursuit to the government code six five four zero two A. That the city's planning agency has submitted a report that was included into the staff report indicating. That the disposal of the property conforms with the city's general plan. Jumping ahead nine years, in October of two thousand thirteen, staff received a letter from uh Axel Carlshoi Properties. Inquiring about the property which they had identified as a potential location for a Twin Rivers Charter School. In February, at the council's discretion, at direction and discretion, the city issued an RFP for the development of the city-owned property. The only response forty-five days later was from Axel Carlshoi Properties. In June, council adopted a resolution declaring the city's council intention to abandon the property. In July, the Parks and Recreation Commission considered the abandonment of the property as well and concurred with staff's recommendation. At the August fifth council meeting. Following a public hearing, council adopted a resolution to abandon the fifteen acres of city-owned property. Some of the major provisions in the purchase sale agreement are as follows. Prior to the, prior to the close of escrow, the buyer shall apply and obtain a use permit from the planning commission to operate a charter school on the property. If the property is not developed from the, for charter school purposes within two years, the city has the ability to obtain. To terminate and repurchase the property back for a price equal or less than the purchase price. The buyer also agrees, it will not sell, convey, or transfer the property to any person, entity, agency. For five years of the recording of the grand deed. This evening, representing the Eric Carlshoi Foundation is Ron Ernie. He's in the audience this evening. If you have any questions of him. I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. McIntyre? Okay, uh, I've got a speaker card here from uh Ladonna, Ladena. Which is to speak on this item. You could please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ladonna Kirdman and I live at thirty-seven twenty-five Libby Lane. That's in Walton, Walton Park. So, my name is Ladonna Kirdman. And I'm a resident of Walnut Park in Western Uba City. And the topic has always come up when we have our neighborhood um national out meetings and our neighborhood watch meetings. That why, and as question of why we don't have a park in our area. And uh, it's apparent that when you look at a map of Uba City. Crude as it is, that there are no parks in our area on the whole western side of Uba City. So um, I've been meeting with Brad and we've been talking a little bit about what we could do to eliminate this issue. And um, along with the Parks and Recreation Committee, we've identified that the area is in need of a city park. There's a lot of residents out there with kids and um, it's seeing them out in the street is. And playing and sitting in um abandoned parks and everything is, is not, not a fun thing to see, so. On behalf of the residents who signed the petition, we've been going around for a couple of years now. Um, I would like to respectfully request that the funds. That are, the funds from the property sale be allocated to the purchase of a future park. Of, for the city of Uba City, and as a first step towards securing a park for. A um, a park in our area in Terabueno, Western City, West Uba City area. So I'd like to thank you in advance for seeing the need. And taking action today to meet that need to build a park in the Uba City western area, um, the Terabueno area.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item?
Also, through the mayor?
Yes.
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second it. Got a motion and a second.
And Mr. Mayor, excuse me over here, that includes the amended legal description?
Well, certainly, I'm sorry, I assumed that that was part of the.
Just, just making sure.
Okay, thank you for.
And my second includes the amended legal description.
Uh, we got a motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number twelve is Office of Traffic Safety Ride Safe Drive Safe Program Grant for a hundred and forty-three seven. A hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred presented by Dennis Hawk Traffic Officer. A good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How was the dove hunting?
Council members, uh, not that good.
Oh.
Maybe the next time that'll be better.
I'll ask anyway.
I'm here this evening uh presenting uh for, from the uh Uba City Police Department. Traffic Education Enforcement Program uh on a, the Office of Traffic Safety Ride Safe Drive Safe Program Grant. That was applied for, by the police department. Uh, recommending that we adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept. A gr- a grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety titled Ride Safe Drive Safe Program. And authorize the chief of police to enter into a professional services agreement with ASPI, the Health and Social Policy Institute. Finding that it's in the best interest of the city to do so and approve expenditure recommendations. Uh, and to further authorize the financial director to make budget adjustments as necessary. This grant that was applied for uh and awarded to the police department is in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand. Seven hundred dollars. Um, it was a grant that was a competitive grant. We, it wasn't just handed out to everyone that applied for it. Based on need and uh history. Of the way that uh we have handled Office of Traffic Safety grants in the past. This particular grant uh is going to target uh teachable youth between the ages of. Five and six and thirteen to seventeen. Um, as part of the grant, we intend to use the funds from this grant to conduct bicycle rodeos. Child passenger safety seat checkup events. To provide two hundred car seats to low-income families and also provide eight hundred bicycle helmets to area youth. Um, personnel from the uh department will also attend training classes related to occupant protection laws and enforcement techniques. And all personnel overtime and other costs related to the training classes will be fully covered by the grant. The grant will also provide funds for uh other equipment necessary to complete these tasks. Ninety-six thousand dollars of the grant will go to ASPI. Um, which will help uh facilitate the uh uh accomplishing these goals. The alternatives, uh, as I stated before, the recommendations is that we adopt uh the resolution. Authorizing acceptance of this grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety. With an alternative of not accepting the grant and directing staff to research additional options.
Questions for Officer Hawk?
Uh, comments? Uh, through the mayor. Um, first, I, I just, uh, kind of a historical uh point for the Office of Traffic Safety, the relationship between. The city of Uba City and, and OTS um has existed since about nineteen eighty-two. Some of the youth in that group are like, ah, it was before I was even around.
Um. Did you say it was?
And, and, huh, that's funny. And over that course of time, uh, Uba City has been the recipient of millions uh of dollars. Uh, either through police services or fire service uh from the Office of Traffic Safety. The relationship has been. A, a uh, a very beneficial relationship between the, the communities. And uh, I certainly would like to take this moment to thank uh Sergeant Green uh for continuing. The efforts uh to obtain those grants and through the staff of the Traffic Enforcement Education uh Unit. And with that, I'd like to move the item.
What, got a motion?
I'll second the item.
Second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, congratulations, and it's always nice to receive a hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, so. With that, we're gonna keep the money coming, and so item number thirteen is Office of Traffic Safety Grant. Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant for eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, this is the second grant that was applied for. Through the California Office of Traffic Safety. Again, this was a, a competitive grant uh based on need and history of. Of our application of grant funds from the state. Uh, this is specifically for, from the Office of Traffic Safety for the selective traffic enforcement program in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars. And this is a no city match required grant. That money would be for uh overtime. Uh, for enforcement efforts. Uh, staff is recommending that we adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept. The money from the Office of Traffic Safety titled Selective Traffic Enforcement Program in the amount of eighty-two thousand dollars. And approve expenditure recommendations and to further authorize the finance director to make budget adjustments as necessary. Specifically, the goals of this grant are to reduce the persons killed and injured in traffic collisions in our city. The uh funded strategies include, among other directed enforcement strategies, DUI saturation patrols. Speed enforcement, uh, red light uh operations and distracted driver enforcement. These strategies are designed to earn both uh media attention uh and to uh. Allow those people that receive citations to share the uh fact that we are issuing citations with other people. Uh, in addition, the overtime costs from the grant will cover the cost of three, or I'm sorry, the uh money from the grant will cover. Overtime costs for these uh enforcement. overtime costs for these enforcements and the purchase of three new LiDAR devices specifically for speed enforcement. LiDAR is similar in radar except that in, instead of targeting multiple vehicles, it targets a single vehicle when we're doing speed enforcement. It's a staff's recommendation that we accept this $82,000 from the California Office of Traffic Safety with an alternative of not accepting the grant and directing staff to research additional alternatives.
Questions?
Through the mayor. Just to clarify, other than the LiDAR equipment, this can only be used for overtime?
It's overtime only. So, there's, the operations will be on a sign-up basis and there, there will be no, no matching money from the city.
All right.
Overtime to facilitate the DUI checkpoints.
DUI checkpoint, saturation patrols, we'll have a number of speed saturation enforcements, distracted driving. There was something else that we were gonna do in this specific.
Is that texting?
I'm sorry?
Is that texting?
Texting, yes. Distracted driving, using a cellphone while operating a motor vehicle or texting.
What is the fine? I'm sorry. What is the fine when you get pulled over for a cellphone?
Not enough.
I, I don't know what it is. I guess I could ask the audience. Has anybody received a cellphone citation recently?
About $487. By the time you add all the court, not that I got one. By the time you add all the court fees up, street fees up, and if you get it one in Marysville, it's even more. From what I understand, just out of curiosity, somebody didn't turn on their right turn signal in Marysville and they got a ticket for that. So, I gotta be careful where you go, so.
And there, I, I do have a question for Officer Hock. Just, I guess for, we have a, a large student audience here tonight. About how many injury collisions does Yuba City experience in a year?
You know, I, I don't have the exact number in front of me. But I do know that injury collisions did decrease a bit last year. Our enforcement efforts were also up even with our limited staff. We were, we were able to do more DUI enforcement last year than the previous year by about 20%. But I don't have the exact number of injury collisions last year in front of me.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Officer Hock, great job. Everything's going in the right direction. I would move the recommendation.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or if a motion carries. Two more items left on the agenda. We're almost there, kids. Item number 14, Emergency Water Restrictions and Water Conservation Update. Diane.
Good evening.
Short showers. Short showers.
Yeah, short showers.
We only have half a glass of water tonight, so we're doing our part, so.
So, my presentation is on the emergency water restrictions and a water conservation update. The city has, obtains its waters through the Feather River in which we have four contracts to obtain the water. Two through the State Water Resources Control Board, one through the North Yuba Water District, and then one through the Department of Water Resources. Through previous years in which our Department of Water Resources contract exceeded our need, we were able to bank water. And so, that's shown in the row for EWR, SWP carryover, which SWP stands for State Water Project. And so, what this table shows is that on a contract paper basis, we have 32,848 acre feet of water available to the city on an annual basis. Our current allotment based upon the drought is 18,040 acre feet. And the projected allotment for 2015, assuming that we have similar allotments to this year and that we use the majority of our carryover water, is approximately 12,600 acre feet. For reference purposes, the 2013 water demand for the city was 18,178 acre feet. And here's a graphical representation. So, you can see on paper, we have plenty of water. But due to the drought, our 2014 water supply is close to what our 2013 water demand was. But our projections for 2015 are significantly less unless we have some major changes this winter in terms of rain and snowpack. So, in January 2014, Governor Brown declared the drought state of emergency in which he issued a proclamation requesting that Californians reduce water usage by 20% and local municipalities implement their water shortage conservation plans, which we did. In April of 2014, Governor Brown issued a proclamation of a continued state of emergency in which he requested that Californians avoid using water to clean sidewalks, driveways, parking lots, and other hardscapes, turn off fountains that are not recirculating, which is one reason why Regency Park and Shanghai Garden Park, those, those spray playgrounds are not on, limit vehicle washing at home by patronizing car washes, and limit outdoor watering of lawns to no more than twice a week. And then in July, due to the fact that statewide, we did not reach the 20% conservation level, the State Water Resources Control Board approved emergency regulations to ensure that water suppliers, their customers, and state residents increase water conservation in urban settings and require urban water suppliers to implement mandatory restrictions on outdoor watering. And for that, that's stage three of our water shortage conservation plan. So, to give a brief information about the water shortage conservation plan, it's outlined in the city's urban water management plan, which is a document that's required to be updated every five years for the city. We have four stages based on required reduction water demand. So, as you can see, stage three results in a projected customer reduction goal of approximately 30%. Stage four would result in what would be estimated as a 40% reduction, which we're hoping we won't ever have to get into stage four. So, with that, the emergency water restrictions that have been put into place include avoiding using the water to clean hardscapes, turning off the fountains, do not use a hose to wash a motor vehicle unless the hose is fitted with a shut-off nozzle. And then this is the one that's really been difficult for people to embrace. And that's the limit of the outdoor watering of lawns to no more than two times per week. So, that relates for even-numbered addresses to watering on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Odd-numbered addresses, watering on Thursdays and Sundays. And then for new lawns, they can water three times per day for three weeks. And so, we just ask that customers call in and just let us know their address so that we'll put them on a list and so we don't hand them any violation, violations. And then for non-residential, they need to submit an irrigation plan to Public Works for large turf areas greater than half an acre if they're not gonna comply with it two times per week. So, enforcement measures, our municipal code outlines the enforcement measures once emergency water restrictions are enacted. These are surcharges on the water bill. So, the first violation is a written warning. The second violation is a $50 surcharge on the next monthly water bill. The third violation is a $100 surcharge, and fourth and subsequent violations is $250 surcharge. We've really been trying to engage with customers to reinforce voluntary compliance rather than getting into an enforcement situation. We have had water patrols in place since July, going around handing out door hangers and providing information. The process as we move into the enforcement measures is that staff will take a timestamped photo of the property as the violation is occurring. So, we'll be able to see the date and time with a picture of the house in the background with the sprinklers on. A letter will be sent to the customer providing written warning with the photo attached. And then they will have a, a week to address that violation. And then any second or subsequent violation would be followed up with an additional letter to the customer notifying them that the surcharge will be added to the next water bill. And we're proposing to begin implementation starting tomorrow. One good thing in terms of conservation update, since we've been starting this since January, is that overall, Yuba City customers have conserved 20.5% on a metered basis compared to 2013. So, we've had tremendous compliance within Yuba City. But when I go back to the graph showing potential projections for 2015, that's why it's so necessary. Even though we've reached the 20% goal, it's really necessary for customers to continue to conserve as much as they can so that we can carry over as much water as possible into next year in case we continue to have an additional year of severe drought. Some of the measures that we've done in terms of conservation, water conservation education, we participated in the summer stroll. We had a booth at the fair. We have information on our website. We have a water rebate program for changing out toilets. Also doing, for commercial establishments having the spray nozzles and the smart irrigation timers. To date, we've had zero applications for the rebate. We've had a lot of people requesting how to get the application online. And we've had questions about follow-up, how do I submit the application to my receipt, but we have yet to receive an actual application. Also, council in July approved the Water Smart Program, which will target our top 5,000 residential water users. We've offered water audits. To date, we've had three requests for residential water audits, which we go into the home and make recommendations for how that home can conserve water. We've offered assistance to adjusting sprinkler timers, especially with this requirement of the odd and even addresses. So, far, 170 customers have taken us up on that assistance. Door hangers for irrigation issues, we've handed out 680 door hangers to date. Leak detection and notification letters. So, when we read the monthly, month, on a monthly basis, the water meters, if there has been a continuous stream of water for the last, within the last 24 hours on that meter, it lets us know that there's a leak detection on that meter. And so, we sent out 1,658 letters in August. When we read the meters September 1st, we, that number was brought down to 1,529 leak reports. And the last letters were sent out towards the end of August. So, we're gonna give people a little bit more time to try to adjust if they have a potential leak. We've handed out conservation kits at the water treatment plant. We've handed out approximately 30. And then through Tera, we modified the My Yuba City app to allow reporting of water wasters. And to date, we have had 66 water wasters reported. So, the recommendation is that even though customers are meeting the statewide goal of 20% conservation, it is essential to enforce emergency water restrictions to retain as much the Department of Water Resources State Water Project carryover water as possible for 2015, plus the fact that it's required through the State Water Resource Control Board. And then we're requesting council adopt a resolution declaring that water supply conditions are such that they dictate and justify the need for the implementation of emergency water restrictions and authorize staff to issue violations per the municipal code. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Diana from the council?
Through the mayor? We have the drought-resistant plant demonstration park at San Brennan Park. And, and that was something that we did a number of years ago. How successful has that been?
I do not think that's been very successful. Number one, I don't think a lot of people know that it's there. Number two, we don't get a lot of questions or, or feedback about the park. And I know we, we haven't done probably a great job of, of advertising that it's there. One of the other things, full disclosure, we watered some of the plants too much, so we had to replace some of the plants. You know, it's drought tolerant. It's not meant to be watered on the same schedule as the rest of the landscaping.
One of the, a suggestion that someone brought to me was that perhaps on our city website, that we should have something that talks about zero scape landscaping and the drought-resistant plantings and what are available, what people can do. Because right now, if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's or any other nursery, you, you know, it's hard to get that information. So, it'd be nice to have that available on our website so that people could have some idea of what type of plantings that they could use to make this happen and so they can come back when they're watering.
We can definitely do that.
What's your number buckling?
Diana, just one observation that, that I'd like to make, and I echo much of what council, or vice mayor just had to talk about. And also, maybe looking at even dwarf planting within our city landscape environment that's been brought forward by citizens, talking about that. But the other observation I, that I would like, and especially when we start talking about enforcement, I just sent out a check the other day to the police department for excessive alarm. And, you know, I took care of the problem. I, I had adopted a dog from the pound and I didn't know she was a leaper, so she was going over the, the fence. She did it three times in, in about a week's period of time and, and that cost me my three alarm responses. And, and I'm not gonna beg out of that. I mean, it's, I love the dog and, and anybody wanna Jack Russell terrier? I've got one.
It's an expensive dog.
She jumps. She jumps. Everything's been taken care of so far. That's really expensive, but you can have her. Small, small, 11 pounds.
These officers got a police alarm?
I have a, yeah, alarm on my house. I'm, I'm afraid of the dark. Been on power outages for, for sprinklers. When we do have a power outage, and we had one on the south end of, of Yuba City here just a couple of weeks ago, mine's defaulted at five o'clock in the morning. It kicks off in like every day unless you go back out there and, and reset your, your, the timer. So, that's something that, that I would like to at least have taken into consideration during the enforcement phase that, that we'd be looking at. Because it, I mean, during the summertime, we do have an occasional power outage.
Even, even city facilities are subject to that, where we'll have a power outage and that resets the timers. So, we will, we will try to have a common sense approach to this and be sensitive to the fact that there are things that happen out of your control that can, can cause issues with the timers.
Appreciate that.
Diana, one of the things I noticed you mentioned is there, there was 1,650 letters that were sent to people that leaks. And now, it only dropped by 100, and now there's like 1,500 letters that have gone out again. Why such a small decrease on so much people that are wasting water?
So, one thing is that we sent out 500 letters every Monday for the previous three weeks. So, some of the people didn't receive letters until last week, so they haven't had a chance to address their issues. The other things is that some of these letters, it might have gone to, you know, a, a commercial store that has some type of recirculating freezer component, or if you have a water cooler that's constantly, they're supposed to be recirculating, but if they don't have their circulating type, that can cause that leak to come up. There's, there's many things that can cause the leak besides, the leak alarm besides an actual leak. And so, that's one of the things is that we wanna monitor, go back on October 1st, read the meter, see if that number's been reduced anymore. And then we will be following up with the people that still have leak alarms to see if there's, we'll do more investigation as to the type of facility that it is and determine whether or not maybe they actually do have water running 24 hours a day. But for the most part, a residential use shouldn't have water running for a 24-hour period non-stop.
I think one of the things council members struck, and I noticed in our briefing, and you brought this up this morning, is, and you just brought it up as well, is offering service for people that don't know how to set their timers.
Yes.
And I think out of what, 30,000 homes, 32,000 homes in city limits, we've only gotten 179 requests. So, we need to make that service more available, either on the website or either in the utility bill to let people know that somebody from the city will come out and actually program those meters. Again, because a lot of people, once they're set, and even their gardeners don't know how to do it. So, that could probably help of doing it from, you know, two days a week or three days a week. That could probably save quite a bit of water that way.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I believe that was stated in the letter that went out to everybody. Apparently, a lot of people don't pay much attention to what comes in the mail.
But we can always do more promotion.
I'm just trying to help increase to 179.
I hear you.
Any other questions from council members?
Sounds like a great program.
Okay, if not, I need a motion.
I'll be moved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You got a motion and a second. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number 15 is Presentation Investment Report Quarterly Ending June 30, 2014. Mr. Spencer Morrison, and this is just for note and file report only, so it does not need any action.
Not really. Actually, there's gonna be a lot of questions on this item, on the test.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Spencer Morrison. I'm your elected city treasurer. And I just thought I would mention real quick for the audience, real briefly what, what I do and why I'm presenting this. So, the city holds quite a bit of pooled cash or cash-like securities. And so, somebody needs to be the steward of those and make sure they're being invested according to our very strict and narrowly-defined investment policy and to safeguard the, the city's funds. And uh just safeguard the the city's funds so that we can fund the the projects that you want to see uh to happen in your city. Uh, with that. This is the, alright, this is the treasurer's quarterly investment report for the fourth quarter, so that'll be. The months of April through June, two thousand fourteen. As you can see that the portfolio value is eighty-three point two million. Seventy-nine point one million of that is city held and three point nine million is trustee held. Uh, the trustee uh holds these in an agreement with bondholders. So uh basically takes the the spending control out of the city's hands, part of our agreement with the bondholders. Includes a, this uh eighty-three point two million also includes one point one million of Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency funds. Uh, the flood control agency is repairing the levees. Um, right now, I think currently on the north end of the uh sea limits. Um, and so uh we administer their uh financials as well. This is a uh one and a half million dollar net decrease from last quarter. Some of the more significant items that happened this quarter would be a property tax remittance. So we received our second uh property tax remittance and debt service payments on various bonds. And uh, we're in the building season, so there was a quite a bit of uh capital outflow. Or for capital improvement product, projects. Twelve investments matured uh or sold. And six were purchased and the average yield of the investments that were sold was point seven eight percent. And the average yield purchased was point eight nine percent. So this, even though those are very, very, very small numbers, it is encouraging because these, uh, the trend has been going downward for. Uh, my entire tenure here, which is about a year and a half. The uh, of the debt service, uh, the pro- I should say the property tax, the property tax, uh, we brought in seven point three million dollars. Uh, from that's from uh homes and uh other unsecured property. And debts, the debt service was about three and a half million dollars, includes uh redevelopment agency bonds. Uh, pension obligation bonds, uh, the Goshay Park uh debt, which is for the aquatic center with the slide and everything over in Goshay Park. And the fire station number four lease, which uh helped fund the uh the new fire station, newest fire station. This is a a pie graph, a pie chart of the city-held uh funds. So this was the seventy, uh seventy-nine million. As you can see, it's pretty well distributed across uh um. Different, different types of of holdings. These are um mostly cash and bonds. The city is not allowed by our policy and by law to invest in stocks. Like uh, like you might see your your parents or your family being invested in. But we do, we are allowed to hold corporate bonds. So uh Walmart and John Deere and Toyota and Honda, they all sell bonds. Which is just basically a uh way to borrow money. And so uh we we purchase those bonds and and uh earn a a meager, a very small amount of interest. About nineteen percent of those of of our total holdings of the seventy-nine million is in these corporate bonds. About twenty-six percent is in agency bonds, which would be uh federal agency bonds and in. Uh, about eleven percent in treasuries, which are the US government uh borrowing money from us. And then we have about seven percent in municipal and state bonds, which is the same cities and and uh. And citizen-like agencies and the state borrowing money from us. Total uh amount of of bonds in our portfolio is sixty-three percent. Uh, other, other investments are in uh very liquid, which which means that we can pull the money out and use it uh right now readily. Today or tomorrow, uh would be in a um investment fund called LEAF, Local Agency Investment Fund, which is run by the state. And then uh that's twenty-three percent and cash. And money market funds and cash-like investments is about thirteen percent and all, uh thirty-seven percent. Is a non-bond bond or more uh cash and money market type investment. My, my last slide is gonna be a little tricky to see, but I'm just gonna explain. Uh, what you're looking at and that is the uh investment, the yield or the rates for the agencies and. Treasury bonds that I spoke of that uh we hold quite a bit of. We're al- we're always looking at and and list watching the news and trying to find out. Uh, when we might be earning more interest on on these investments and that's important to us because we can take those interest earnings. And turn around and use them uh to pay for city services. And so I, I looked at this uh, put together this slide and I I looked at the treasuries and agencies yield from exactly a year ago. And noticed that uh the news and the graphs all looked exactly the same as now. And a year ago, I I came to this council and I said, you know, there might be a light at the end of the tunnel, the investor, the. Investors out there are really optimistic and they're really feeling good about things and that's sort of what the news is today. Uh, one year later, so it uh must be just the cycle for the end, uh, the end of spring and the beginning of summer. But uh, there, you can sort of see it in these graphs and I have. Uh, well, I'm just saying, I I put big red arrows on the the points I wanna draw your attention to. I just looked at um, at uh, oh, the one percent, the one percent spot right here. In the uh, so about three months ago. And I looked at the the about the one percent yield here, uh. Uh, this is actually, I'm using more current date in in August. And eh, the uh, the investments that we have were limited to five years. So we can't invest any farther out than five years in these bonds. And what I'm showing with the slide is that we're actually moving a little bit to the left to get up to that one percent mark, so the shorter. The shorter uh maturity bonds are starting to uh just increase just a little bit in in rates and in yields, so we. Uh, we, that's, it just happens to be exactly what we're doing with our money right now. As the interest rates seem to be climbing just a little bit. The city is investing on more short uh short term. Uh, to not get locked into lower rates as the rates increase and that's a strategy, str- strategy that we commonly use. And so with that, I have no further comments.
Okay, any questions for Spencer at all? Spencer, you've answered all the questions, you did a fantastic job. It's always nice to see that uh. The graphs are finally trending towards a positive direction. Uh, so which means the return should be increasing slowly but surely. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, uh, next up is uh business from city council, uh, city council reports, Councilmember Buckland.
On the twenty-first of August, I attended uh last board of director meeting for SECOG. Down in Sacramento, um, and and I would report on uh to other members on the council that uh. SECOG voted uh overwhelmingly twenty-seven to two on the board of directors. Uh, to send a letter in response to uh the draft environmental impact report uh submitted by the city of Benicia. Uh, in re- in regard to the Valero uh crude oil imports. Um, it was a very controversial issue uh discussed for well over an hour. But uh addressed for the uh uptick impacts um for our area. Uh, specifically talking about um, uh, north Sutter County. And and potentially south Sutter County. Um, but uh really looking at uh addressing the needs of public safety in regard to. Uh, prior notification and also training and equipment. Uh, to build to address any issue uh dealing with this volatile crude. Um, it it was well attended by the public and uh and a letter was sent forward. Uh, to be attached to uh or for response by the city of Benicia. Never fun to do that to another city, uh, but uh certainly uh needed to be looked at, this left unaddressed within. Uh, the impact report, so that's all I have.
Right, Councilmember Maun.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Starkey.
On the twenty-first, I had the opportunity to attend the Yuba Sutter Trans Authority Board Meeting and the next day, the chamber breakfast that talked about a state of the education in Yuba Sutter Counties. And uh, the state of education seems to be in a very positive fashion. And I'm glad to see all you kids here today, thank you.
Right, Vice Mayor Dukes.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the students for being here tonight. Usually this place empties out after the first couple items, so it's uh. Kind of refreshing to see a full house for the full meeting. Um, to report, I had uh attended a dinner last week to uh welcome Colonel Doug Lee. To Beale Air Force Base uh as the wing commander. He actually is, has been here for several months and he was here prior to this year, but it was the formal. Welcome dinner for he and his family and it uh, it was very well attended, uh. Both sides of the river, probably a little bit more by Yuba County from their supervisors, but uh. It was very nice to honor uh Colonel Lee and it's uh nice to have him as the wing commander at Beale Air Force Base.
Great, I don't have anything major reported in all of our committee meetings uh meet next week. Uh, for those of you that are joining us today for the first time to get extra credit or points. Uh, that's one great way to be here, but I wanna thank each and every one of you. Coming here and especially experiencing how city council meetings run, how tax dollars are spent, how they're voted on. Uh, one of the biggest projects that's being worked on this community right now and Spencer touched on a little bit was the Sutter Buttes Flood Agency. We are repairing forty-plus miles of levees uh here in Yuba City to keep us safe from flooding. I know on one hand, we're talking about drought, on the other hand, we're talking about levees, but we're prone to flooding. And if you've never ever taken a tour of our levees on how they're being built, how they're torn down, how they're built. I would encourage each and every one of you, go out and take a look, it's literally right at the end of Pease Road. And Livock Boulevard, they're actually doing it, uh, getting it fixed. That was something that the Sutter Buttes Flood Agency had budgeted for, uh, uh, just to give you a little uh rundown real quick is we had budgeted. Maybe finding two Indian burial site grounds due to the Indians. And so far to date, we've found fifteen uh Indian burial sites in that levee, so there's a lot of uh delay work. But they're moving along, they're progressing along and uh hopefully by the end of next year, we'll be pretty close to getting that, to getting that levee's work. So we've got quite a bit of those meetings, but uh, other than that, all of us sit on the council, we all serve on different committees. Uh, that represent our communities, our counties. Uh, other city council members from uh other jurisdictions, from Wheatland, Livock. And supervisors from Sutter County, Yuba County, uh also serve on those same committees uh with us as well, so. Uh, we do have meet twice a month, but believe it or not, this sometimes comes, becomes the easier part. Uh, because we do have briefings on everything that you see here, uh, even though it may not be discussed here right now, it's definitely discussed. Prior uh to these meetings and questions are asked, why this, why that. Uh, from all those staff members, our questions, we hope are answered and dissected at that point in time. Uh, but it's other committees, other community representations that we've got to do. And I know coming up uh real soon here, so within first part of November is the mayor's cup, that we always look forward to. Uh, so with that, all of us will stick around and answer any questions that you guys may have. Uh, but with that, I'm gonna go ahead and uh adjourn the meeting and say thank you for coming.